Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Bein' 6:30, we'll start the meeting of the Westminster Select Board, April 27th. 6:30 PM, 2022. Adjustments to the agenda. We do have one adjustment, we need to add a cemetery deed. We can move, we can move that to C.
What's, what's 6B then?
Oh, sorry, oh, I didn't realize it was already, okay, nevermind, we're good. I guess we don't have one.
Under B, okay, 6, yeah, that's it.
Yep, sorry. Seconds of the minutes for April 13th, 2022.
I've moved that, we approve the minutes as per.
A second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes for April 13th, 2022. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Prove. How about April 19th, 2022?
Approve both minutes as permitted.
I'll second.
Motion's been moved and seconded for, to approve the April 19th, 2022 minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Communication and public comments. Wait this time.
Just a quick one.
Sure. Just state your name so that we can.
Cassandra, how to go. I'm sure we're all aware that there's a lot being done down at the Westminster motel. I'm friends of the neighbors and I'm super uncomfortable with the way the landowner of the motel is treating his neighbors, including the six-foot barricade-like fence he's putting up right now that's according to property lines, two feet onto his neighbor's property. So I guess I'm just bringing it to the attention. The fence went up while we did not have a zoning master. So I'm not sure if it's permitted, but I do know it now, it goes all the way across the backside of their property as well, so.
I think we are definitely aware that there, I know we're aware there's an issue there. I don't know what we can do about it, anything at this time. Ally has been working on it with him, if she wants to talk to it, she can, but I know it's a DRB issue more than it is any of us.
He came in today and submitted his permit for the fence and I had sent him a letter to not, he had, he was given permission by the former zoning administrator to put up a sample of what he was going to do for the fence. And so when I, when he folks pointed me for it, I was inundated for three days. And, okay. So, no, I, I sent him a letter, I met with Chris Potter. Chris Potter went and looked at what he was doing, I went and looked at it, I, you know, and so Chris Potter advised me to send a letter for him to please wait for the process. You, you had tabled your fence permit. It's okay that you leave what you have there for now, but until we can get to the DRB, stop. So if he's continued to build as of today, I don't know what we can do except for wait. We have to, I guess we have to wait.
Yeah, so I'm not sure, but it was certainly within the last 48 hours, his fence, which originally went just between the two properties, now is across the entire backside of his neighbor's property.
So I haven't gone that way and I will take a look, but he came in today with his permit, so I, I didn't have a chance to talk to him because I was doing some other things and asking the permit fee for the tree and I'll go down tomorrow and see what's going on.
Yeah, and I just, I might, given that you weren't the person who issued it, I might check the property lines because I believe the existing fence is on the neighbor's property, not on his property. Okay, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's it.
Anybody else?
We don't, I don't get, well, it's a good question. You don't have another step as a board? If Ally comes back and says he won't stop, there would be another step that we would actually call the Sheriff's Department to go do it, I don't know what you call it.
Cease and desist.
Cease and desist, right?
I would assume so.
I mean, at this point, it's illegal if it's on his neighbor's property.
I, I spent an hour down there, I don't know, a week or so ago, and I, I saw three pins in the ground and I, I don't think it's over it myself, but I didn't, I'm not a surveyor. Devenardo did survey it. I, I don't know.
Well, I know that personally, my house, I got a permit issued, we put a large addition on, and then two years later, when we purchased the property, found out that they had given us incorrect property lines and our porch is two feet from our neighbor's property line.
Oh, yeah.
Versus the 30 feet, 40 feet that we thought it was.
Yeah.
So there's definitely some incorrect property line information that's been here.
Sure, oh, there's definitely issues there and I think we, we'll definitely have to wade, wade through them, but I think the process has to work to get to that point.
That's in the village district as well?
It's in the historic district, it's in the village. There's a lot of stuff going on there that's well beyond my comprehension, so.
And I'm reading as much as I can, as fast as I can.
And we appreciate you taking it on, because, you would say, not simple.
But if you need help, you need to come back to the Select Board because if the Select Board does have authority and say, okay, let's send out a letter and actually enforce it. I guess I don't have a problem as long as they're stopped doing what they're doing until they actually get to hear.
Have a, have a permit and.
Right. But they just handed a permit and you have to give them the due process. But a due process is stop doing what you're doing because that's definitely beyond what the last one gave you permission to do.
I'd say maybe a permit application.
Correct, yeah.
So he had, he didn't have an approved permit, he just dropped off the permit application?
He, yes, he, he had tabled the fence part of, I'm just reading minutes.
Yeah.
I wasn't here.
Yeah.
He had tabled the fence part of his construction, his permit. He tabled that part and then was told he could do an example. And so he did the example, but he ended up putting posts all around and I wrote a letter, yes, stop. Per Chris Potter, a certified letter, you need to stop. So if he's done more since then, we will, we'll look into it tomorrow, but he just, he just put the permit in for the fence.
I can be available too if you need.
Thank you very much, it is, we're asking a lot of, appreciate it. Does the town still use a fence viewer?
That used to be.
I think it's on the list, like, we still use it.
Who's assigned that?
But a good, it's a good chance that person who is the.
Wall Perkley used to be a fence viewer.
Fence viewers, Warren Muzzy, Tony Coben, and Paul Streeter.
Chances are they're gonna go there with that.
Hold on.
You go down there and you can do that first.
Tell him you can't see it from your house.
Well, I mean, we know there's an issue there and we definitely need to look into it, but we gotta let it run its course to get to that point.
Yeah, of course, that was just my.
But thank you for bringing it to our attention. Anything else? Communication and public comments.
I don't know that there was a point where Friday afternoon couldn't get to properties, and I did read through the minutes just quickly, especially Morse Park Road.
Okay.
So, yeah, I guess I take exception to that, we'll get to your property.
Okay. This is.
Mr. Grillo, I think.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, close, yeah, yeah, we will get to your property.
Okay.
So just to be clear, that didn't ever happen?
Excuse me?
So just to be clear, that did not ever happen?
That the road was so muddy we couldn't get to a property?
Yeah.
That was what you said, right.
I would assume you guys would bring that to the Select Board's attention or like your road foreman.
They, and, and the, the road foreman contacts me as well as people on the Select Board and says, you know, this road is pretty nasty. If we have to have a loader, a skater, we'll get there. Yeah, but, yeah, we have trucks and we can get there.
Any other communication and public comments? If there's, Josh, is there, if there's nobody online right there, there's nobody. Unfinished business.
Sorry, I was gonna say, if somebody comes in, you'll see a giant admittance thing.
Okay, thank you. Unfinished business. Conflict of interest policy update from 2010.
Yeah, I'd like to address that briefly if I may, Mr. Chair. So the conflict of interest policy that's before us is the last time that the, all members of the Select Board signed this document, which was in 2010. Mr. Chair, it's my intention to bring this document back after reasonable discussion with the members of the community and everyone else. And to keep it simple for tonight, just focus on Article 5, which is disclosure. And, well, let me go to first, and Millie, you don't, please, you don't have to. I'm just referring to Article 2, okay, of this policy, which is, the purpose is to ensure that the business of this municipality will be conducted in such a way that no public official of the municipality will gain personal or financial advantage from his or her work for the municipality and so that the public trust in municipal officials will be preserved. There's also an intent of this policy to ensure that all decisions made by municipal officers are based on the best interest of the community at large. So going to Article 5, which is regarding the disclosures and how those are made, there seems to be a loophole system here where we're limiting the disclosure requirement to the person who sits on the board. And the reality is, if I sit on the board, it's just like my ethics policy, if you're in private practice or you're, you're at work, or the rules of procedure in any governing organization, I'm also obligated to make sure that I'm pointing out something that someone else may or may not be doing that's appropriate and willfully knowing it. And I'm not, not saying that that happens, I'm simply saying that simply because I'm a citizen, I can't take my citizen hat on, put it on, and then when I'm in my position of public office, right, I take it off, excuse me, the other way around. I have my public officer roll on, but then, when I want to speak and address something where I may have a personal issue, I want to take that off and speak only as a citizen. Well, that doesn't nullify the conflict of interest because the conflict still may exist. So not trying to reinvent the wheel, but I think many people, I'm not saying everyone, I'm saying that any people would be refreshed by taking a close look at this, Mr. Chair, and members of the public to make sure that we have a policy that at least, not only is we sign, once you come on the board, that we're going to act in the best interest of the town, but that when we see someone or something else that may constitute a conflict, that we ask that person and/or parties to fully disclose that conflict. And I think that's reasonable. And hopefully we'll get input from everyone also in the community and come up with a policy that's fair, balanced, and effective so that we have transparency and the best practices going forward. So there's less rancor when sticky situations may come up in the future because after all, it's a small town, you know, we do want to keep the work within the town. So that's all I have to say. Thank you all very much.
So would it be your suggestion to review this?
Yes, with the town council and maybe send it out to members of the community, even those that are here tonight, if anyone objects, to get their input on, on, on the policy, if they have any input, and send it out to even the folks that are here, because I have all their emails, just looking at everybody, if, unless, to have everyone's input, if they want to give it, so that way we can go forward on the policy. This is the policy though, as it exists. I got this from Patty.
22 years is a long time to not look at a policy, at minimum, review it.
Yeah.
When I first got on, we had a call as a committee that was concerned, and we haven't had one now, so I don't know how long. Because it takes time away from the Select Board, and you really do need us to keep coming back and say, we looked at this, and the Select Board would have a discussion. Yeah, things have changed a lot. And I guess I definitely, a little bit, we're asking people to do a lot of things where there's no financial gain. To me, financial gain is critical, you know, I mean, if you're asking somebody to do something where we're actually paying them, then that's, that's different than when we ask people to volunteer their time to do it. But yeah, I think it's time, I think, we haven't, I don't know why we've been this long, a lot of looking at our policy.
Well, there was a, since you, since you brought it up, excuse me, Molly, if I could, someone else brought up the nature of the bidding process. You know, all of our contractors have to bid, or at least ideally are supposed to bid, yet professional services are not on there. I find that a little strange because a professional service is the same thing, right? It's, at least in my book, I could be wrong, but professional service, whether you're an accountant, whether you're an IT company, or whether you're an attorney, right, you know, you're, you are bidding out a service. So I'm not sure, it's, it's unhealthy for us to look at the possibility of storing that one exception to the bidding process. I don't know how that would hurt if we had to interview three lawyers if the contractor of the town lawyer was up, and certainly nothing against Larry, he's fantastic, you know, I'm just simply pointing that out, that for some reason I found that exception to be unusual.
Well, if I may, Cassandra, how to go. Unfair a little bit to, to other small businesses that might be trying to thrive and build in a small town. If those town physicians aren't being bid out ever, then a new contracting company or a new paving company, no offense to anybody, has no chance to put their foot in the door if we're not bidding those jobs out publicly. And in a sense, that is still a conflict of interest if you're working for a contracting company to say you don't have a conflict of interest if you maintain that same contract every year and that process is never getting bid out, and you made the policy that you don't have to bid out the jobs, in a sense, you're benefiting financially from the situation. That's just my personal thing.
All right.
I think as Select Board members, you know, you're more on a hot seat than probably the contractors or the lawyers or anything else, but it is very important when you're sitting in those chairs, because you all know why I sit in a chair on a school board and have for years and, you know, if, if they want to build something, they're gonna come to me because they know I have some knowledge, but I'm very careful that I don't bid on that job because I could have financial gain on getting that job. So, you know, I will give, I will help them with maybe how it ought to, how the procedure ought to happen, but I don't bid on those jobs because I sit behind that table and I could get financial gain, not maybe even personally, maybe the company I work for that I'm managing, you know, you can't, you can't do that. That is, we've had some, some times when we had a school board member who ran a private school. Well, you know, he had, he could have financial gain by, by his school, you know, having students from, from our school. It's a very, very fine line and it's a line that I don't think as small-town people, we take it as seriously as we should. I'm black or white, it's, I know what I should do, that is right and wrong, and even if you get financial gain, you can't do it. You can't do it if you're sitting behind that table. And that's, that is a huge part of this. This says a lot more than that. I read this when I got here, it's something I'm very interested in because, you know, there's a lot of times where I can stick my neck out and, you know, want to be part of that process because that's good for me, but because I'm on that board, I, you have to be very careful. And it, it's a thing in small town that sometimes people like to just sweep front of the rug, but we just can't.
Things are changing too. Obviously, I'm involved with conflict of interest when it comes to that, but what needs to be updated on the whole thing is, even in the states where I'm dealing with all these different towns, we're not keeping up, that's the complaint of how procedure of sending an email to bid, where they go, because we're being really discouraged now, letting people into the building, and so we just had two towns where they've gone back up and they're gonna figure it all out, where they sent an email to the wrong person, and it has to be a designated person, the town has to designate who that is, and then when they get that email, they're not allowed to open it up. All these procedures were, nobody was caught up to it. The other problem is, is there's so few people out there that do it, if you wanted the John Deere backhoe, there's no other John Deere, you just have to go with it. So it's gonna be a different procedure I see coming up where you're gonna have to just get shot and make sure the price you're getting from that one vendor is the correct price, is, is it going right? I don't know, because there is no vendors left that do a lot of things anymore. We used to have so many more choices of where you could get equipment and everything else, and it's just down to a few left, and it is hard to get even competitive prices anymore. I don't know what, so I think when we look at the policy, it's also keeping up to date to what, what's going on through the VLCT, or sending out advisories all the time and try to figure out, the state of Vermont is too, on how to proceed, how do you take it, who gets it, and what do we do with it? I think we do need to update the whole that.
Kevin, what do you think is a good timeframe?
Two meetings from now, a meeting from now.
Two meetings? Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
One, one challenge I look, deal with constantly is my procurement policy says anything over $3,000, I get to get three prices. I spend most of my time on the phone getting three prices. Usually by the time I get three prices, the first price isn't a good, so.
And be honest with you.
$3,000 is a joke.
Yeah, and be honest with you, that procedure right there is wrong, that's where we're having an argument. Who are you to call and get prices? Because you're, you could be like, I'm only doing it, and when I deal with road foremen all the time, I go, I'm not sending it to you, I have to send it to somebody else that you don't, because what's stopping you from just saying, well, hey, Joe Blow gave me this, so you're my friend, I'll call you, and this is what the rate is, and what do you think? It happens a lot, and that's what they're trying to cut out, is this, well, yeah, I called and got two prices, well, where, what kind of bid, that's a quote. Now, we're gonna have to do more quotes because nobody wants to take the time to bid them anymore, but even in that quote system, somewhere along the line has got a procedure that allows you to do that, and then when you do it, it's gotta be documented somehow. But I think that's the.
Well, through email, they, somehow they gotta know first, you know.
We've had this discussion before, that a phone call is no good.
Right.
It has to be documented.
Well, yeah, that's, that's correct, okay.
Well, no, I, I'm just saying that we've had the same discussion before, this stuff.
Yeah.
And you're talking about is a totally different policy, you're talking about procurement policy.
Right, that's all I'm saying, is that when we're changing things, that is, you know, the way we do everything, that should be part of this, it's all integral.
In every town, it reads that differently. I have a lot of towns that says that that road foreman can go up and do whatever he wants as long as that amount of money came out of that budget line and it was approved by the voters. There is no 3,000 or 5,000. They come back to me, I just bought this and this.
Well, I don't.
So it's all part of what Kevin's, we gotta come back and come up with a good policy that you understand, the people who're here, they're working, you understand how to do it. So I'm with you.
So two weeks, two weeks, two meetings from now will give us sufficient time to review our cut up and then we'll start the discussion on. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Changes?
I'll accept the survey if sent to me, if you ever can, if you need permission.
Thank you. Anyone object?
I don't know what he's talking about.
Permission to send him a copy, permission to send the folks out there today a copy of the policy. Does anyone object if I email it to you and ask for your income?
Income.
Input? That would be a conflict of interest. All right, so we'll, we'll move on to chart of compatible offices, but we'll, we'll save this for new business, unfinished business, two meetings from now. Great, thank you. Chart of compatible offices discussion. I don't have any of that paperwork in front of me.
I was just gonna say, I don't think it's in the back.
No, I think that was a holdover from a tableing from last meeting. We can table that again, or, I mean, we don't have any information on it, so I guess we'll, we'll table that at this time.
I probably have it if you want it, but you wanted to table it?
I think we'll table it for now, and I think some of these others are gonna take some time. List of appointments, is there any changes to that?
Yeah, at this time, Mr. Chair, I would like to, at this point, I think, I think it requires a motion. We had a, an interim, well, maybe not, we had an in, we, we appointed an interim ad hoc committee for establishing the duties of the temporary financial officer. However, the financial officer is also town manager right now, interim town manager and zoning administrator. Thank you, thank you, thank you. She's doing a great job. What's that? Okay. I'm 0 for 2 tonight. But I think at this point that we can disband that ad hoc committee because it's, at this point moot until some time as it's needed to get.
Yeah, I don't know if we need a motion for that or not, but.
Everybody quit, that's all, everybody disconnect.
Everybody quit. Is there, is there any adjustments to this appointment list that anybody has right now? Well, I'm not 100% sure what the red meant and the black meant. I think the red was, you know.
One where he actually called and said they would do it, and one he didn't get a chance to call.
Which is which?
I recall the red was assumptions.
You think so? I don't have it in front of me.
I think.
Well, we can just go with what, we can go with what Russ had himself on for the previous manager, we can go with zoning, we have that figured out. Well, zoning, sign control administrator, I'm not sure what that honestly even is, is that the same as zoning, sign control?
Sign control?
Zoning slash sign control administrator, it's all part of it.
So people put up like signs, like yard signs, basically, she's.
Or business signs.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. In the same sense.
Well, the old town, they're gonna put a big sign.
Yeah, but the town, Chuck, the town sign for a business is interim zoning.
It's all part of it, though.
No, but the yard one, that was what that was originally for, people started complaining. So we had rules of like, it can only be so many days up, or it had to be down so many days.
Political type sign, like a, like a.
Yeah, those, those we're exempt anyways, we can't, nothing to do with other than they can only be a certain time up and down. But we had a lot of people with yard sales all the time, so what's a yard sale all the time, you're in business, right? So they would have to say, the sign would have to be in the ground, it would have to be only so many days, and in the course of a year, and only so many days in the course of a month, that.
I thought it was like that sign on the propane tank, that big sign.
No, that was part of zoning, that's part of zoning.
And then take it down, I thought that wasn't in compliance or.
Because he didn't get a zoning permit at all.
Oh, wow.
That was wrong.
I see.
Yeah, just like in front of our places, a big sign, we're gonna change it, it has to be so many square feet and everything, it has to be no bigger than what it was, it has to be lit at night for so many hours and all that, that's all part of the original commercial business, or permit, which would be the permit, but the signage is, we had a lot of complaints with people just throwing signs up all the time, they were leaving them there, saying like, like, business is down here. Who gets it right when we regulate commercial people all the time? With the commercial people, you have to have, yeah, so.
Okay, so going from the bottom, Windham Solid Waste Representative, Kevin was gonna take that.
Yeah, I'm on that, I reported that.
We still have a vacant Windham Regional Planning Commission, and it says will be advertised, so I guess we should look at that, have it advertise that at some point.
I thought we did, I thought I saw it, maybe I'm wrong.
For Windham Regional?
I don't know. Man, I saw one just a while ago.
Moving up the list, Town Service Officer, that was the manager, I don't even know what the Town Service Officer is.
I think our new manager's handling it.
Service Officer in the Legion is, they can share, we know about sick comrades, that's all I know about a service officer.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't even know what it was.
But she even knows what it is.
So Town, Town Health Officer, three-year, he was that as well, Russ was that as well, so.
That is one we have.
We need to figure that out.
So that's the one where somebody sewer system's running over into somebody else's sewer system, you have to go investigate it and see if the, if the. if the complaint is legit.
Okay.
On board, it wasn't very well.
Chuck, just saying he wants to-
Road Commissioner, that has been changed.
I know, we went right by there, but I was thinking of Chuck, to be honest with you. That's something you do for a little while.
For what?
Jason's already done it. Don't do it, Chuck.
You're doing it, Jason, what?
No, the Road Commissioner.
No, go back to the, go back to that one.
Somebody calls the town right now.
You've already got, you've already got one. You're talking about Health Officer?
Yeah.
Okay, nevermind.
That we do not have.
Right, that's what I'm saying. You went by it.
Or you're virtual buy it.
I didn't go by it. I said-
That's Ben, right?
He was asking about-
I think credit emergency. Ben would be emergency, but wouldn't that fall in the health? Yeah, so, ooh, that's true. Healthy sounds like emergency.
I don't think so. I think health, that's always been, well. Yeah.
That's mainly one neighbor complained about, like I said, I know he's gone out three or four times for sewer. You know, where they thought they smelled raw sewer coming from the house.
That's not it. I mean, it's landlord, tenants complaining about landlords and-
Land inspections with the-
Yes.
Or welfare check.
Or-
Yeah.
Yeah, it's more than that.
In your emergency management plan, it's already in there that it's called.
That's emergency.
Nothing you do.
I'm just, I'm just calling.
I love that idea.
He's almost red his shirt.
But, I would be, I feel like it would overlap.
I think it would.
There's some stuff that-
It wasn't, you know, Cole knows where they use it, because remember the smoke coming out of, that's what, that's what that officer was going to deposition. Was it emergency? Is more complaints?
You don't think I'd take enough complaints from the board for that? I don't care.
What's the response? Time is expected if somebody takes the role. How quick do you have to act?
I don't know. Within a day. Normally you'd say, I'll get back to you within a day.
That's fine. If somebody calls for an order coming from somebody's house, I'm gonna call the fire department anyway.
Where you see smoke.
Alright, well, I don't think we're gonna solve Health Officer tonight at this moment.
Yeah, that's fine. He's getting the landlords, tenants.
No, we don't even have a, we don't have a call.
We need to keep the banter down though, because we're gonna never get the ministry.
It's all, it's all recorded.
So, that's, currently though, we do have a Health Officer according to our emergency management plan, somehow.
Yes.
Can you send me your info? I'm assuming that's something Cole that you're not real interested in doing. Okay, so.
There can be a lot of politics in the Health Officer, without a doubt. I mean, like I say, when you're going landlord, tenant, yeah, that can really be-
I know.
Spend a lot of time at it.
Ruth Pierce did it for years, and she could tell you that she, she worked quite a bit at it, to be honest with you.
Well, it also has in parentheses, Health Officer, three years, so that's a, must be a term.
Yeah. Like I said, for years it was her.
Alright, well, that's, that's one. Windham Regional and Health Officer need to be straightened out for sure.
So, I'll put a tentative interest in the Health Officer, but I wanna know more about the actual news.
Obviously, the psych ward doesn't know a lot.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I-
Because if it's just a matter of reporting what you see back to the board, I'm okay with that. But if it's actual interaction with-
It's interaction. Basically, you actually come back and you say, hey, you know, there's a religious complaint and then you call it the fire department, or the fire department, or whatever, you know?
I don't think, I don't think that's, yeah.
Chuck, I assume it comes with a stipend at some time?
That I couldn't tell you. I don't know that. He, I don't know that.
Since I've been here, it was either Russ and Ruth, and both were getting paid.
Somewhere else?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Say that again?
Bring it paid.
No, Russ was already town manager, so he said, I'll assume that role, but we didn't actually designate his pay for so much for the Health Officer.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying? Ruth was saying that he was a full-time lister. I don't remember her designate part of her pay to be the Health Officer. Even though if we asked him to do it, yeah, we'd feel like, oh, wait a minute, how much are you doing? And it varied so much, so, yeah. Let's bring it back. Let's find out a little bit more about what he did.
I feel like no matter who did it, they'd feel a little more comfortable if we actually had some police protection.
I disagree with you there. Let's just find a little bit, I think we're just guessing at what this role is. Let's just find out a little bit.
Tonight, absolutely.
We'll come back.
So, moving up the list, Road Commissioner has been changed. Cemetery Commissioner. I thought last meeting, we talked to Chris Potter about that, but he wasn't interested in that because he's already the- he can't be both, because he's already the Assistant Commissioner.
He's this, he's-
He's the Sexton, sorry.
So, that would be Malcolm then? Right?
It was, it was Russ.
It was Russ.
He was commissioners, right?
No, Russ would do the money part.
So, it lists Cemetery Sexton, Christopher Potter. Cemetery Commissioner, Russell Hodgkins. Cemetery Assistant Commissioners, Christopher Potter, Norman Wright.
Nobody would change hands with us, number one. But they'd bring the deed into the- Chris would bring the money in, go into the coffers for perpetual care and for the law. But Russ never touched any money with that position. Had nothing to do with it. So, I don't know what the commissioner would do.
Chris did bring it up though, that there's, there's actual rules and laws that you're supposed to follow as a cemetery.
Is Norm Rice named on there?
He is Assistant Commissioner.
Technically, wouldn't the assistant just take over the commissioner position? Like automatically?
I would say that would probably be correct at, in the short term.
Yeah.
Well, we, we need to put that on the list and talk to Chris about that.
I know, I thought Russ did mostly just the budget numbers and everything, you know, he's given so much and everything else.
So, for the, for the lawn care, you mean, and all that?
Yeah, that's what I believe. It wasn't for the sites, because that was Chris Potter always handling that. But for the overall care of the cemetery, doing the contracts, I don't know what else to be involved with.
Well, we'll put it on the list of things we need to straighten out for sure. And that's, that's all that was on this list. For the next meeting, I'll see if Kelly can get a updated list.
I'll call Chris Potter and ask him exactly what that job entails.
It sounded like there was training involved and like a fair bit of stuff really for what it was. Anything else on appointments? List of appointments?
Oh, sorry. Just a thought, which it's probably not enough time to do this, but if there was a list of vacant positions and a description of what they entail, that could be on the table at town meeting to-
Or as a handout or something.
Potential people to sign up.
We could, we could, we could talk about it real quick. Just say, these are the position in contact, local that, we're looking for more volunteers. It'd be nice to get more volunteers and not the same people doing more jobs. That'd be nice.
Thank you.
One more suggestion too, and I know it's been done in the past. It was done while I was on the board. Some of those aren't statutorily required anymore. And we did some zeroing out of other positions like that in the past. Not that you work over, but-
No, I'm-
As the world changes, a lot of those things, especially in the finances.
We gotta get an updated, whenever I asked that before, it was state statute that the weyer of coal, the fence viewer, all those were all statutory, put in there. And maybe by now, that's not true, but whenever I, like, why would we have a weyer of coal?
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. It's some have probably gone by the wayside.
Okay. Well, I have it down to get an updated list for next, the next meeting. We want to D, unless there's any other discussion at this time? On list of appointments. The Appointment of Interim Treasurer Process. We don't have anything in a packet for that either. That was a holdover, I believe, from a table last meeting. Do we wanna table that again, or do we wanna talk about it, or how do we wanna do that? But I think we should discuss. Alright. Who's up to discuss?
Kevin, why don't you begin, discussion?
Okay, so, in this process, we're gonna go back to the day that I was the chair. And what occurred on that day was that Paul Harlow was the acting, excuse me, was the actual Bible, was the treasurer. And at the beginning of the meeting, Mr. Harlow came up and resigned. And we all know Paul is a great guy. However, prior to that, I was unaware of any other functionality regarding his replacement. Now, I believe we're all certain that the statute requires that once that occurred at that meeting, it was our statutory requirement to immediately vote to appoint a ready, willing, and able treasurer, or someone who is willing to take the role as an interim treasurer. There was a lot of confusion. If at any point anyone disagrees with what I'm saying, please let me know. And at that point, we had a series of events that occurred. The town manager, the banker, a member of NEMERIC, and a member of the board had assumed this role, or assumed the, the process of the role. I was not aware of this. I'm not aware that anyone else on the board was aware of it, but it could have happened. I'm not sure. Okay? In any event though, we were, as far as I know, completely out of the lane as far as our legal responsibility. I'm certain of that. So, in the interim, I asked if anybody could step up and be that role. And Sandra Pettigo was on the phone line and she raised her hand to do so. At that point, we had a discussion. And there was an interim position decided, right, that we were limited to two weeks. However, from a statutory standpoint, and that's just being, going by the rule, I'm not, none of us here are attorneys, okay? But going by the rule, I don't think we have an authority that is limited to a two-week appointment. We have an appointment to make that appointment on an interim basis and then revisit that interim. As it's changed. Now, very quickly, how things occurred. Our, our town manager resigned. And on top of that, we lost a member of the board as well. And so as I was saying to assistant this afternoon, the last day for a former board, a former manager, wasn't until legally the 12th. And then the 13th, which is literally two weeks ago. So, this thing was somewhat tabled during all of this stuff that was going on. And I think it's time that we get back to having a frank discussion, oh, Mr. Chair, over the appointment of the treasurer and the treasurer position. And we've also had the very wonderful luxury of now having an interim town manager who is just awesome in the world to all of us. And at the same time, I don't think we should be leaving something frankly, open indefinitely. And to start to discuss this and get this matter resolved. Agreed.
So, I had a lot of time to, you know, think about the position, research the position, figure out a little bit. Like you said, had, had we done things correctly, was all of that. So, I did reach out to the Secretary of State office, and they were fairly helpful. It seems as so, you guys completely have the authority to appoint and unappoint the treasurer at any point. If you, I'm an appointed treasurer, it's not elected by the people, so you guys can remove that appointment as you choose, for whatever reason. However, you are not allowed to dictate or define the roles of the position. So, with that being said, our previous treasurer had delegated responsibilities to other people, which he is allowed to do, that was his, his allowance. When a new treasurer is appointed or a new treasurer is elected, it's kinda like you start back at zero, right? That person takes their responsibilities back and they decide it's the same as, you know, if you appoint a financial officer and you tell them they can do these things, the treasurer is responsible for doing. Well, if the treasurer says, no, I wanna do it, then I can do it and I can mess it up all day if I want to, because that's my appointed right. Now, clearly, that is not what I would like to do. I am not a financial anything, right? I'm 28 years old. I'm really focused trying to get my business started. I did this as, the conversation was, we need somebody to sign checks for two weeks. And I was like, I got a right hand and I have, my signature's pretty fast, I'll sign checks. With that being said, I now realize after putting my hand up that clearly you guys, although you just appointed me to sign checks, legally, I'm now responsible for any wrongdoing the treasurer's position might come about during my time. So, I did reach out to the previous town manager to try and get a more clear description of what are the treasurer's duties in this town and who is currently performing them, because I'm not performing them. So, I'm responsible technically to whoever is now performing them, and I have no idea who that is. I don't know who to call and say, hey, just wanna make sure you're sitting down with the select board and figuring out the budget. And I wasn't really able to get any of that information. So, that was kinda frustrating for me. Within the first day of Ally being in the office, she sent me over the most recent kinda responsibility duties, duties that was in the system. So, that question was answered, for the most part. However, I do feel that going until November, having a treasurer who is only capable of signing checks might not make the most sense. I'm happy to do so. If you guys as the board decide that that's what you wanna do, I'll show up every two weeks and I'll sign checks and check payables and make sure everything matches. But if you're looking for somebody to fulfill the duties of a treasurer, I think that one needs to be clearly defined, because even with what, you know, what you gave me, it's not, it's not that clear. So, we, we definitely need to more clearly define the roles and responsibilities that come with being the treasurer. And then possibly look at appointing somebody based on those abilities. Which I don't, I don't know. Maybe I look over the sheet and I'm like, yeah, I can do all this stuff. As of right now, I've gotten two very different packets of information as what the treasurer may be responsible for. Neither of which I would actually feel comfortable completing all of, if somebody asked me to. So, I guess that's where I stand. I just don't have a really clear idea of what my role is, aside from signing checks. I don't really know who is doing all the other work to make sure that I'm not liable for wrongdoing. And as Kevin said, we kinda tabled this for a while, and I feel like we should address all of it.
Thank you very much. And I say this last thing for myself. Going back to that evening, I wanna thank you for sticking your neck out and doing that, okay? But as the chair at the time, I'm gonna take full responsibility. It's my fault. I'm gonna have to, because that's what the chair has to do for what happened that day. I should have been aware that the treasurer was resigning. I was not. I should have been aware of what happened at town hall earlier that day regarding those four other people. I was not. So, I take that as my personal responsibility, or what I can do to say I'm sorry. And it was my responsibility. And I do appreciate the fact that you came forward and made sure that we were not- and made sure that we were not statutorily doing something that we weren't supposed to. Now that we're past that and moving on to a new future as a town down here in Pakistan, we move forward to that and rectify the situation as soon as we possibly can so we have a solution that's agreeable to all, that is in the best interest of everybody.
So what's the procedure? What, whatever it is to, whatever I'm doing now, I don't know what I'm doing, because I'm just like her. The other day, I signed checks and I don't know why my role is to sign checks. I don't know what a token is. So in the whole process that we're doing, you need to get me off whatever I'm assigned to, because I'm the last person to do it. I don't even know what I'm supposed to be doing at the time. There shouldn't be a select board anyways. But technically, that's the town treasurer, then chooses the assistant town treasurer. So I would say that at least what you got to do is at least come back with, this is what we're going to do, and this will be the town treasurer, and let the town treasurer choose the assistant town treasurer.
I just want to make clear that, please, Allison, Cassandra could not. We could have gone to her house, but she had a personal situation, and you were still on the banking.
No, I, like I said.
She was no fault of hers.
No, I'm not. I didn't say it that way.
I don't know what they're talking about. I'm sorry.
No, I would just put it, it all worked. Cassandra's been a great help. I helped out, but this was only just to get us through.
And yes, we should move forward with that.
That's what I'm saying. Whatever the fix is, let's permit we fix it. Okay?
I agree. How do we want to move? I'm sorry.
Jason, I, to me, we don't, we're taking it all too seriously. And keep in mind that this is an elected position for three years. The town treasurers that I know about are not financial people, including Paul. And they're doing it to be sort of another citizen, look at the work that the town office is doing just to send the checks out for what's being bid and regular operational stuff and whatever. It's just, that's all it is. It's just a citizen look at the money's going out from the town. And so what you guys need to do as a select board, because there's been resignation, is just appoint a willing person to do that, that work for the months between now and the next election. And maybe that person, if the town is lucky, will say, hey, this isn't so bad. I'll continue doing it. But it's not that serious. It's something that also happens on the school board level. We all kind of take turns signing warrants sometimes, going to the supervisory room if you're on the school. It is, it's just a citizen look at the, at the money's going in and out. And I think, I don't think you need to be looking for
Financial profession.
Financial person, but more an honest person who cares about the town and is willing to put the name on it.
Which is more or less what I signed up for. And I'm happy to continue to do, as you said, very, you know, basic duties. I was just making it blatantly clear that I collect, got a couple of different rights and responsibilities or whatever that were, were not simple citizen duties by any means. With that being said, I would like to make it known that I did make an appointment for a different assistant treasurer that was not honored. And I'm not exactly sure why that is not up for any type of discussion. But again, it fell in a time of other things were going on. But.
Want to just bring back some.
You appointed another assistant and it didn't happen? Is that what you?
Yes. I formally, at the board meeting, appoint, asked Craig to be removed, whatever, however I was supposed to word it, and appointed Pauline O'Brien. And I dropped off a signed and dated letter at the front desk asking for that appointment. But Kelly, and it was not honored.
I never saw a signed and dated.
I signed and dated in front of Kelly.
I did see a note, an email, I believe.
I came in in person, signed and dated it. Russ was sitting in his office. He said, just sign that and date it in front of Kelly and hand it to her.
Okay.
So.
I realize that, but I called the bank and I called the chair and the vice chair following my appointment and told them that that letter had been dropped off. And then after my meeting with the former manager and the Nemrick representative, when I was informed that my appointment had not been honored in any sense, I again informed you guys that I, my appointment had not been honored.
What do we want to do? If anything at this time? Well, I mean. No, no.
Well, again, going back to how we got here. And I appreciate your comments about it. You know, this is about someone who's ready, willing, and able. And you don't have to be a financial professional to do this particular role. And I know, speaking for myself on this board, I don't want to repeat of how this came to be, right? And I take full responsibility for that day. And I appreciate the person stepping up to get that job done. You know, the purpose here until the next election, which is soon, right? It will be this year. No, it will not be soon?
No. I don't know where this November date came from, Pauline O'Brien. I don't know where the November date came from. It would not be an appointment, it would not be an election until March of 2023. There are no officers elected in November.
Correct.
I think people are confused about the Senate and the.
Midterm versus local.
I think it's in November, some people said November.
Yeah.
It's always been handed to to have the treasurer to be in, that works in the building, just because of the things going on. Why don't we just, we're going to meet in two more weeks? Is that correct?
Yes.
Why don't we, why don't we ask the staff what they think too? Because I don't want to keep going and without asking the staff what they think and then come back with a final decision of how we want to do it. This is my suggestion.
But isn't Paul Banner, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, thank you.
Isn't the point that Kevin is trying to open up here with his question or beginning this conversation is to affirm the appointment that you made? To give her all duties and authorities to do the job of treasurer? Tableting it now pushes it two weeks out, two more weeks that she isn't clear on what her duties are. And business as usual is going to happen.
But we have to honor the staff that's in that building. And it's, we took our time to ask her to come back, and now it's time to like, okay, does it make sense? Cassandra's been a help. I've been trying to help whatever we can do, but it's only temporarily. And if everybody's comfortable, then we can come back and say, well, let's continue it this way. Definitely one thing is remove me from whatever I'm doing, but whatever. But I just think that in the past, that's the whole thing, is that the treasurer, the clerk, the listeners all have to work in that building together. So let's just make sure, now into March, that it's like we're did the right decision and everybody can cooperate and get along.
At the end of the day, is it, is it, is it something that you still? I mean, and I realize that putting you in that position, but not assuming the responsibility, but not, is that something you still, I mean, do you want to do that? I mean, like.
Well.
I guess I'm trying to just feel it out.
I mean, it's like.
I can understand your frustration.
Kind of a catch 22. Do you want to maintain the responsibility, but we're not going to tell you what the responsibility is yet? But do you want to keep it?
Yeah, sure.
So I mean, I wouldn't apply for a job if I didn't know the job description.
Right.
Because the next thing I know, I'm in. Maybe now in the next meeting, we figure out what she's going to do.
It's almost in the same boat, because if you give us two more weeks in the same boat we're talking about when we have an advertiser for a town manager, because we shouldn't until we know as a select board what we want. And you're bringing up good questions as a select board. We really kind of need to discuss that. Okay, this is what we want for a treasurer. And I think we're all looking at each other, not knowing exactly what that role is. And I think we need to just.
I think, I think someone in-house would be the ideal way.
Right.
Am I wrong?
That's wrong, correct.
I mean.
Well, somebody at least in health, everybody agrees that this is the way to work.
If that's available.
We don't work in that building, you know? And that might think is, is keep the atmosphere, keep everything going. Don't, we're missing bodies in that building now. And everybody's chipping in and trying to do what they can to help out. And I think we just want to, just want to make sure that we did the right thing with the treasurer and what their role is going to be and how they're going to fit in with the other staff members there.
Mr. Chair?
Molly.
I think that you're maybe missing one point here, and that is, Mr. Major made a very good point, and it is why in the school board area, and not the, but this is where I come from, someone from outside of that office goes in and looks at those ones. Do we know exactly what we're signing for? No, but we know to look for things that maybe look a little goofy, you know? And if there's a, if there's expense that goes out that just looks different, you know, we can come and ask, you know, what that is. An outside person, doesn't have to be a financial guru, doesn't have to know how the town is run every day, but it's some, it's a new set of eyes. And if the same person does it most of the time, and then something awkward comes up, they're going to recognize that. And it's just that extra set of eyes that doesn't have anything to do with, with the office. Because, you know, truth be known, if you're doing it and you're signing for it, or if you're sitting right next to the person who's doing it, you know, you really trust those people that are you're working with every day, and maybe you're not going to look at it like someone else is going to. And, you know, I do think that that outside set of eyes is what, you know, what we do at that level is, you know, we don't know for sure exactly what we're signing for every time, but we see the different numbers. We see something look really like, why is the electric bill up, you know, two grand this month? What's wrong, you know? It's the second set of eyes. And a neutral set of eyes.
Yeah. I want to make one last, without belaboring it, but this is the key. We brought up the conflict of interest policy. We've talked about ethics. We all know, we don't write ethics policies for our health. We write them because history dictates that ethics tend to have a proclivity to be broken, sometimes broken for the worse way. The objective we have here is to start afresh and make sure that the rules that we're supposed to be governed by, which are Vermont state annotated, are followed. And in that particular case, they were not. And I've apologized for my section of that, having no idea what happened in the first part of that day. That's the issue, as far as I'm concerned. And I think that, you know, if we're going to have what we all want, which have no questions, no recriminations, when we make a policy, we stick with it. When there's a disclosure, we make it. When someone who's the chair or the vice chair or the clerk or the treasurer is obligated to be told what they're supposed to be doing, they're not supposed to be blindsided. And that is not what we're working towards. It's not what we're working towards, the best practices, getting back to the basics and making sure that we're not only following the rules, but that we're all comfortable with them, we all work together, and our time spent in Town Hall, running the town's business is effective, efficient, and when we're here, we're happy to see each other. That's it. So this all goes back to a day. This isn't about, you know, the personalities. It goes back to a day where policies were not followed. And what we need to do is make sure that doesn't happen again.
What's, just, yeah?
One last thing. Again, to go back to what Mr. Major said, this is a voluntarily appointed position or elected position of somebody from the community who is not walking into the town office first and is making sure that their personalities click with the town manager and the town clerk and the, and, you know, the janitor or anyone else who might work in there. You don't actually get any job that way. You never walk into a restaurant and you make sure you get along with everyone in the restaurant before you get the job. You actually learn to get along with the people that you have to work with. So although I appreciate the concept of making sure everyone else in the town office is comfortable with what's happening, the town office has been very uncomfortable for the last couple of weeks because it's been a little, in a little bit of turmoil. I feel what I did was extremely gracious and generous. And for there to be any confusion or wonder of how the town office might be feeling about my appointment is a little bit insulting. Because if I had just been elected, we wouldn't, the select board would not be reaching out to the town office to make sure they liked me.
I don't think Craig said that at all. I'm sorry. He said that he wanted to honor the people in the town office.
I didn't, if you took it that way, I apologize.
He didn't say that.
Brandon Pettigo, that's exactly what I heard, Craig.
It's an elected position.
It is, it's appointed by us. We've always had the good grace to go in and say, what do you think about this? It's nothing about personalities, it's how the physical part will work. That's all, and the roles. We've had a lot of changes in this town. It's not normal. We've lost not just a treasurer, but a town manager. And it's like, okay, what are we doing? I don't know.
So I mean, I guess it's personal perspective, what you said and how you hear it. But what I heard was that you had to consult with the town office to see how things would work together.
Correct. Nothing to do with personality, this is, okay, what role is.
The word personalities were most certainly said in your conversation. So I'm just saying. I don't know how many other, it's none. So I don't see anyone else under the age of 30 sitting at this meeting right now. And if you can't accept when younger people come in and are trying to get involved and they're naive and maybe don't know what they're getting involved in, and you don't open, like, just open your door and when you're accepting and you're welcoming, that's not going to continue. They just won't come to meetings if they feel spoken down to. They won't stand up in volunteer position if they walk into the town office and nobody will make eye contact with them. Or the town manager won't simply give them a description of their job, the former town manager. So.
I apologize if you took it that way. It was, I don't know, it's, it's, the hard part is the discussion start was what is the role of the town treasurer? And I'm going like, that comes from us. The select board describes what this clerk is, what it is, when we appoint him, so we know what everybody's doing. I guess I thought that's what I was making a point. Let's go back and see if we appoint anybody, what is the role? Where would they fit in? So who's picking up what the other duties were? We just don't have a town manager either, so we're asking everybody to take some pride in it.
What's the board's pleasure at this point? It's not up to me.
My conversation with V L C T was we appointed her. She's until the next election. And we can't do it.
And there's no, there's no changing that until the next election. Nor does the select board dictate, right, the responsibilities of any office.
I don't think there's really anything we have to do besides let her do her job. Or whatever aspect of the job you want to do.
I would suggest the board, support the treasurer. It's not complicated. Support the treasurer.
Right.
Well, I think that we have to make it clear that when we appointed, it was only two weeks. So we just basically say, this is what the term is from now until March.
Do that.
We didn't have the authority.
We didn't have the authority to do that. Once we appointed her, we appointed her, and there was no time.
Okay.
Our.
The motion was two weeks.
Correct, but that was actually not legal.
Pauline, did you have something?
I was just, my confusion is the minutes read, and it was a two-year, two-week appointment. And. And wasn't interim, the two-week appointment?
Two-week appointment.
And that's what the minutes over that.
Right.
And that's what, that's what the reporting was like.
Right, correct. V L C T says he can't do that.
Okay.
Even, but we did do that.
But we did do it.
So, so I have a suggestion, that that one of you, Katrina, make a motion that the, that the town treasurer, the interim town treasurer position will run into the, until the next election. And that you have, and and that you have appointed Cassandra Pettigo to that position.
Affirming the position, there you go.
Okay, I make a motion that we have appointed Cassandra Pettigo to the position of treasurer until the next election.
I'll second that.
Uh, motion has been moved and seconded to support the appointment of the town treasurer as Cassandra Pettigo. And so until the next general, uh, town.
Right, the only other way that would change would be if she decides to resign.
Give her the power to choose, in that case, she's, she's the power to choose between now and next time an assistant town treasurer, which means they can pull it to me, which is fine, I don't really care.
She already did appoint.
I already had the authority, I did it. I did not accept it. So, in my defense, I was told by the town manager you would accept it when I made the appointment.
I did not hear that.
Okay, so that is my apology, I was informed by the town manager that you had expressed interest and would, in the treasure, retain that position. So, that was not the conversation that we had, okay?
Uh, we have a motion on the table. This one moved and seconded, we're in discussion. Any other discussion at this time?
But like I said, this question, did some, Pauline, did you actually submit that you would be the town treasurer at one time too?
Right.
But that never came to us. Other than this.
No.
Was that prior to the appointment or after the appointment?
Prior to.
Prior to the treasurer being appointed?
It was a two-week appointment, my understanding it was a two-week appointment. So I had come forward to the town manager at the time and said, if that's the position that was needed, I, and historically, in the town of Westminster, the town clerk has also been a town treasurer. So I just thought it made sense if that was the responsibilities. So, anyway, again, another miscommunication.
No, unfortunately, that day before Paul designed as the chair, I had no communication as to what was going on in this most inappropriate, awkward, and wrong setup that occurred prior to that, that precipitated this whole matter. Uh, and I've taken full responsibility for it, that's all I can do. I'm so sorry if this causes any recriminations for anyone else, because as chair, I should have been much more in point, and I appreciate everything. We are a better town, Pauline, because it's just, that's a fact, okay? And at the end of the day, all I can do is apologize. We are in a position though where Cassandra was simply there, without any other intent that I can assume, that was best intent to meet a request that I was asking for desperately, to meet the statutory requirement, which was the proper way that we should have been followed. And that's, I still take that responsibility for putting us in that position. So I am so sorry, but where the statute works now, as, as Katrina has has vetted, this is where we should be. But I take full responsibility for all of it, and I am sorry to everyone. Sorry.
I have a question, just for general knowledge, did you, you had prior knowledge to Paul leaving?
This is me?
No.
No, she's saying in between when I got appointed in the two-week year, in that two-week period.
When we thought our two-week thing was legal.
Yeah, that's what she is.
In that two-week.
Yeah, in that two-week.
And honestly, I was a little involved with that because Pauline told Russ, Russ told me, I said, well, we can't accept it unless we get a, a letter. I can't take Russ's word for it, you see what I'm saying? I was thinking that she was gonna be, then you'd be her assistant, but that's a different old story. But so, so he goes, yeah, she's willing to do it until March. I go, oh, okay, that worked. But in between the time that she said that to Russ, and then the next, when the next chance came up, Russ was gone. So it just multiplied messy, but that was what originally was, okay, the two weeks are up, Pauline gracefully volunteered to do it, but I got a little involved, because I just said, I can't take somebody else's word, either Pauline has to be at the meeting, or she has to send a letter saying she's interested in doing the job. It's just snowballed into this complicated, but I got no problem with you doing the job either, I really don't. And I, and I agree with you, I think it's nice to have young people get more involved with it. Motion lives.
Any other discussion at this time? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Guys have it. Moving on. Uh, town meeting discussion. David, I assume that's why you're here?
Yep. And I, I just wanted to make sure that, that all is, that we'll be ready, that we'll be ready for town meeting and sort of make, and, uh, that also that the select board, if if the meeting will run more smoothly if each of you decide which motions you would like to make for the town portion of the meeting.
We had them somewhat figured out, which have now changed with Toby's absence, so we'll have to, uh, give you two more up, which I will do, it doesn't matter to me either way.
Okay. And do you have that list?
I do.
Right there, do you wanna just read them off to me?
Uh, yep.
Article eight?
Uh, article eight was Kevin.
Nine?
Nine was supposed to be Toby, uh, I can do that, it's the library in Westminster West, I can do that.
Okay.
It's not the library, where are you reading that?
Article nine.
Westminster West Library.
Bridge rehabilitation.
Oh, am I looking at something different? Oh, sorry.
They must have changed since.
I think it's changed.
I have it. Okay, sorry, sorry, sorry.
It's changed, you can pull by that one time, yeah.
So, sorry.
Okay about doing bridge rehabilitation?
Myself?
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Okay, article ten, which is, uh, uh, some to be applied from fiscal year of the surplus, to be applied for the next fiscal year.
Uh, we didn't have anybody on that.
Sure?
Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, just article ten on this.
Oh, that was, that was Kevin.
Kevin?
Yes, sorry, I'm, yeah, there, it was five now.
Usually the person who makes the motion, the moderator then gives them the chance, if they want it, to be the first person to speak on it. So just.
So you, you, just go, Dave, are you gonna be reading them, is what you're saying?
No, uh, if, if, yes, I'll, I'll read them, you can just say, I move as read, if you'd like, but then, and then I'll pause for a second, and then I will ask whether you have anything to say, whether you would like to, you as the maker of the motion, have anything to explain. So I, I only say that to make sure that if you, if you put your name down before making, as the person to move one of these motions, that you have an idea of what it is.
Or if they're not comfortable speaking on it, traditionally, he could move it to adjacent to speak on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think, Ali, right, though, we've done it twice, right? So, uh, just, David, real quick, how do you want it? Do you want me to just move article eight, or do you want me to move article eight and say, say it?
I think we've done it, last year was as written, or as warned, or something like that.
No, we just said, I move article eight, that's all we said.
I move article eight as written.
Yeah.
As written, you have to move it as written.
And then you're gonna read it.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah. Article eleven, which is Butterfield Library.
That was me.
Institute. Um, article twelve, uh, the elevator at the institute.
Katrina had that.
Oh, no, that wasn't me. Did I have eleven?
Yeah, we're, we're reading a list that the numbers totally changed too.
Katrina, you can move that to Jim Meto.
The Butterfield Library was the eleven.
Yeah.
Okay, I had twelve.
He's gonna speak on it.
There's no, I mean, they both have to do with the institute.
Jim's gonna speak on, Jim's gonna speak on eleven and twelve anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Jim's gonna be the primary speaker on eleven and twelve anyway.
Katrina, you wanna do both?
Jim, Jim will do his thing.
I'll do whatever.
So twelve is Katrina.
Okay, thirteen, which is Southern, Southeastern Vermont Economic Development, Snowbets. Always a controversy.
Kevin, that sounds like a good one.
What the hell?
Uh, I'm not sure who actually had it, actually, you did it anyway.
And, and usually they, that, the people from Snowbets will do their.
Yep, they'll do their spiel.
It's all me.
Okay, article fourteen, West, West Library related.
I, that was supposed to be Toby, I can do that, that's fine.
Uh, and then transact any other business that's in the town, it's the last article fifteen. Uh, I read it, no one knew.
Yeah.
Okay. That's it, thank you. And I, and I hear from Chuck with the sound system and the.
Yep, I confirmed with Floyd, and you did today, is that, or no?
No, no, I just said that you had.
Yeah, I confirmed before that we're good.
Okay, yeah.
Best septic should be dropping two porta potties off on Friday. Kelly's bringing the citizen of the year plaque and that, that stuff, and I think Susan would like to do that.
Susan's gonna do it.
Which I don't, I don't have a problem with, I don't know if anybody else does, but. What else?
Mr. Chair.
I think Chuck was gonna be there, I said I would be there about eight, eight-thirty to help with tables and whatever else needed to be done, you would have a couple guys anyway, or try to.
Yep.
Paul?
Permission to question, David, as moderator, can an article be taken off at town meeting, because it could be possible funding from a different place?
If the article be moved, and then you could amend it, or you could table it, you could move to table, you could move to amend it, you could say, or take out the funding because we're anticipating another source of funds. You could, um, uh, you could move to pass over.
I could explain why I asked the question really quickly. The suggestion during the committee, the ARPA committee, excuse me, has come up that that could come from ARPA funds. But I wouldn't want them to lose their opportunities, so to speak, if for some reason it wasn't approved.
What, in which article are you talking about?
Eleven. So it would be the one for the institute's request for twenty-five thousand dollars for awards, the repairs or replacement of the elevator.
Yeah, yeah.
That's twelve, that's article twelve.
So.
I, I, yeah, I think you want to talk to Jim Meto and just make sure that he's kind of on board with that, and then.
He's the one that suggested it.
He's the one that suggested.
But what happened, my, my concern is, if I didn't state clearly, is that I don't want the town, it to come out of the town's meeting for approval, and then somehow the ARPA committee, I mean, advises the select board to spend money there, and the select board somehow says, no, the institute's gonna be kinda mad at us. So I'm not gonna close that. You can say, we get back to you, you don't have to introduce tonight, but help us with, try to help us with that a little bit.
I was gonna say, just because it's approved, it doesn't even mean they need to spend it. But I think what he's saying is that if it was approved, the board might be less likely to say yes to using the ARPA funds for it, maybe?
That's, that's, yeah, I know too, yep.
I mean, I, I would think you could put a clause in and encourage the select board to use, to apply for these ARPA funds for this project. Okay, just, just make an amendment.
Uh, so anything else on town meeting, I, I think, I feel pretty good about it at this point. I think we have checked with everybody we need to check with and got things going, so.
Thank you.
Cross our fingers for good weather. Uh, all right, seeing nothing else for town meeting, we'll move on to, uh, new business, Vermont D E C wetlands program. Uh, this came into the clerk's office, I think, I think Patty sent it to me, and she felt like the board should, uh, be the ones to approve this, doesn't cost us anything, um, it's, I think it's a wetlands inventory type thing.
Is there any of it changed?
What's that? No, it's nothing to do, this is not that, it's something totally separate. It's, uh, the wetlands in Westminster West near the firehouse and the wetlands in the town forests. Ecological inventory.
And are they offering to do the grant, like they're doing all the grant work?
This, I believe it's nothing for us to do, they're, they just need our permission to do it. So shouldn't, shouldn't be a big issue, but they do need permission to do it.
Wetlands, okay.
Is it on our list?
Yes.
It's already designated as a wetland.
I don't think it would, I don't think it would change it. It's a survey.
And they're already protected wetlands, aren't they?
I would assume so. Uh, I guess I would take a motion to approve that or not.
Everybody should know what the program is.
I guess my, my only question would be is.
I would, yeah, I would like to see this person here to give us a little more information, Mr. Chair. I'd hate to think we approved something that we had no authority to do.
I don't see it as a big issue, but if the board as a whole doesn't, or does, then that's fine.
I guess I.
It's just giving permission.
You know, with your suspicion of the, oh, they didn't.
That's what, yeah.
If they have a right to do it, they wouldn't be asking us, so why are you really asking us?
There you go, that's my question.
What are these times?
If they have a right to do it, they just do it, why are they asking?
Well, I don't think they, I don't think they have a right to do it, I think they have to ask our permission to have a right to do it.
See, I'm with Kevin.
Come talk to us.
Yeah.
Don't sound that invasive, though.
No, because they like designate your wetland to be larger than it is, and then you can't do anything.
You know, people, we were just talking about defense, but people get sensitive, they look out, and if your neighbor and all of a sudden there's a state going in and somebody out there, I would like to say, okay, you're gonna contact all the neighbors that you're out there surveying, and you got permission to do this or something, not, just go ahead and do it.
I mean, isn't this something that could be brought up at town meeting then?
Or he could just come.
Well, no, the state can come and explain why they're doing it.
Yeah.
On the downside, yeah. Apparently, they sent it to an email to bounce back, and I don't know what that meant, so. But we're here.
I think someone's gonna contact this guy.
So, yeah, that's how, we'll, uh, we'll contact him and go from there, we'll table it for now.
Somebody might wanna also check out the website and just see what email or he's like going, or outbound or that.
I was thinking the same thing, but while we're on the webpage tonight, and definitely not even close enough, hey, with all the contacts and all that are still the same.
He got it, but some of them said it's.
All right, moving on.
It is, and I knew that, this, last I talked to Sue Harlow, she's getting down to.
Cemetery deed, we have a cemetery deed. Somebody will have to make a motion for this other than myself.
I'll make a motion to, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt the cemetery deed for Matthew C. and Carol L. White. Uh, section D, road two, grave sixty-five, in the Westminster New Cemetery.
Uh, motions are moved and seconded to approve the cemetery deed, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. We have an executive session that we will do after other business. Okay, we'll need a motion to move that executive session to after other business.
Mr. Chair, a move for executive session after other business to discuss a contracting, contract with the town.
A contract with the town?
Contractual issue.
Contractual issue.
Contractual, I think.
Yes, sorry.
Nope, that's fine.
It's been moved. Is there a second? Between the second one?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The new. Boards, committees, and commissions?
I do as chair, Paul Bianc, chair of the upper committee. I'm gonna read something that Jim asked me to carry in tonight because he couldn't be, or Jim Meto, that is. He said that all he had to say was kudos to Ally for getting squared away the account with the U.S. Treasury and a big thanks to Wyndham Regional for helping with the report. He says he was pretty much a spectator on Ally being judged at. I can tell you that Jim really should be chair of this committee, but he just does not wanna do it. And, but he is the backbone to this committee and has done a lot to help. Even though we haven't had a lot of traction, he's done much to help make it so that we can start moving forward. And first move was to get Ally and two of us signed in, so we can sign in and continue this reporting system. So we're all good for this year.
Awesome.
We're good till April, anyway.
Thank you both, and Jim. You can thank Jim for all of us.
Daily, daily. I do believe in him. So, and Ally as well. I mean, she's, she's made this happen.
One hundred percent.
Thank you, Ally.
Thanks, Ally.
Thank you.
The committee does have some suggestions. Unfortunately, the committee is not well attended. So Jim and I are kinda running rogue right now. We don't have the support from any of the other committee members. I'm not chastising them. I'm actually reaching out. I hope that they can start communicating somehow if they don't wanna come to the meetings. We did have a meeting scheduled for last night. It was abruptly canceled due to the power outage in the village as a result of the MVA down here on Cordell's Hill. So it would have been at that meeting that we would have had a member that has not been there, at least as far as, as long as I've gone on, who I'm told has quite a lot of knowledge, especially working with other towns in the area for what she does. So I was looking forward to that, and it was not able to happen. And we only have a couple of suggestions that I'm aware of. One suggestion that's been made by a resident here was to upgrade the swimming pool on Morse Brook Road, to make it more attractive, more receptive to people using it. He didn't specify what that meant. He just thought that it needed to be taken care of a little better, maybe, to put words in his mouth.
This is the Morse Brook?
Yeah.
The private leotard?
What is it?
It's private leotard.
Why do you know that?
Really? It's private leotard.
Okay.
I'll have to respond to that.
There's a committee.
Recreation committee, right?
Yeah, they formed their own, well, not their own, but they came to us. It's theirs. Whoever goes back would donate, you know, pretty used, but they, they wanted me to just monitor that, almost like what you're saying. So you could go to them, but it is private leotard.
I know that they've come to us for money in past years.
They did. A couple times, we had some bad incidents out there, and they wanted to put cameras one time and all that.
And insurance, I think.
Yeah.
Yes. We need to have it on our, the sheriff's.
There's another suggestion that's been made, or an idea, I'll call it at this point, for some of these monies, maybe a percentage, a designated percentage of the total monies received from, which the second installment's on its way in June or July, I'm not exactly sure, towards the idea of a new town garage facility to offset expenses there. The guidelines that we're using now, we're operating under, and allowed us to put those monies into the general fund, say that, to ultra boil it down, any expenditures that the town would normally make in any given year is acceptable to spend the ARPA money on the guidelines that we're running under now. So if it's a normally budgeted item, if it's an unexpected item that we would have to pay for, if it's money towards a rec area that we've done before, these are the things that we don't even have to go back to the state and say, can we do this?
That was a one-time reporting, right, when it was moved, and that's it, or no?
We, we have to report again next year, the first quarter.
Because of the next payment, but.
Because we might not get the second payment in this fiscal year.
Right. But once you spend it, you're not reporting every expenditure. You're.
What, how it worked out today is I, I told them, we reported this equipment here.
Yeah.
Because we've paid for it in that quarter.
Yeah.
But the generator for the Thia district was ordered and installed in March, but the bill wasn't paid in April, so that goes on the next reporting year. Okay, so everything we spend, I've got a file. So the next person that steps in, everything that we spend on this through ARPA funds will go, it will go in that file. So that person can report easily and quickly. They just wanna know what we did with it. They're not judging it. They just wanna know what we did with it, because now it's ours.
How's it?
So even if it's moved into the general fund, the expenditures are still recorded after the fact?
Yes. Yes, and the village money was an IT issue on there and, and we will not be penalized or lose the money from the village money because we couldn't report on that this time around.
That was my last statement, so I'll just, just to put your mind at ease, as well as ours a little more. So we will, we're effectively planning on a mid-May date again for our next meeting. I reached out in the cancellation notice last night to all members that I'm aware of. If they have any suggestions for a different date, other than that, please get ahold of me. Right now, it's pretty much been just Chip and I.
Yep, thanks. Anything else under boards, committees, and commissions? All right, other business. Any other business to be brought at this time?
I don't know if we can do anything about it, but I would like to get the token back in the office to do the banking.
I use tokens for the car wash. I don't even know what you're talking about.
Okay, it's a little token that when I, when the person goes into the bank to report that we are paying our feds, we're paying our state, we're paying our employees. I would just like that back in home, back home. We really should resolve on who's gonna be on the bank account. Nothing I'm volunteering for, but it really should be some really housekeeping stuff, just to think about. I know we got town meeting coming up.
Agreed.
But maybe next week or the week, you know, the next meeting, we can have that.
I mean, as we've talked, there's
Yes.
a handful of stuff that definitely needs to be.
But I just want it, I just don't wanna forget about it. That's all.
Who has, this one, understand. Chip and I have the tokens now, and there is no token. There is nothing.
Yes, it is. It's a token. You have to. When you log into the website, you have to push a button. What it tells you to push the button on that token, it gives you a special code.
I never got it. I never got it. I don't have a token.
That's a lot of money that you don't know where that is.
I don't know where, I went over there, Katie had me sign some papers, and she said, you're all set. I never got any.
So there's, is a token that should be modified?
I don't, I don't have it.
We need to find or we need to cancel all tokens and issue a new one.
So I also asked this question about where the token was, and the former manager thought that it may still be in the form of treasurer's hands. Not that it's an active token, but that the physical token that he had might still be in his hands.
I have, I can tell you right, that Chip is using my, the token I originally had, because it has my town clerk EJ on it. So Derek has that.
He was the first person that actually told me it was a physical piece, because when I went and saw Katie, she goes, you just signed this and you're what I call a token holder. I don't get it. No.
Let's get, let's get through Saturday.
Just moving on.
Let's get through Saturday, and we'll, we need to fix this debacle, too.
And I have one more thing about, I apologize. Kevin, your, your wife is on what, PC?
Planning.
Planning Commission.
Okay, I received a grant to sign off for the planning commission, and I did not sign it, and I will have it at the next meeting. I just want it public. I did not sign it because it stated that the town is agreeing to match the funds they get in their grant, and I knew nothing about that. So if that has to be put on the back burner till our next meeting, I'll put it on the agenda. Okay?
Very good.
All right.
Just back to the token, because I was at the meeting when the resignation and all happened. Russ clearly stated he had a token in his.
He did. That's the one Chip had.
He gave that one to Chip. It's the second token we can't find. Currently, there's one active token. He's an active token holder.
It's not like they can use it unless they know what they're using it for.
Yeah.
It's just an expensive, it's not a cheap piece of equipment.
Yeah.
It really isn't. It's this big. It's size of a half dollar. But it's, yeah. It's, it's, there's no danger to anybody unless they know what to do. And obviously Craig's not gonna have a clue, so.
She just said you're.
All right, well, I've been like confidence and leadership. I'm gonna put the tokens on the list.
That only proves that anybody could be assistant town treasurer. That's all, that anybody can.
So I have one thing under other business. Pauline has put together, I'm assuming in the past, too, but some welcome packets for people that moved to town.
She did a great job.
There's a letter, just lots of town information, if somebody, anybody wants to look at it.
Amazing job.
I think it's pretty slick, yeah. Pretty slick. I like it.
Very good.
That, that's all I have at this point. Anybody else on the board? All right. Date of the next meeting, May eleventh, twenty twenty-two. We will go into, I need a motion to go into an executive session.
Well, you got it, Kevin. Kevin did it. It could be a contractual issue.
Okay. See you all Saturday.